That is yours. Let's see.
We'll call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2024-20, excuse me, dash O2 for January 16, 2024. Those who would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this hand to deliver us from our trespasses. We will give our lives for us past against us. And we do not temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thy is kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any corrections, discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Consent agenda passes. We have a proclamation this morning to recognize the birthday celebration and commemoration, I'm sorry, of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Mr. Jesse Ballard.
He's not here.
He's not here? Is there anyone here in place of Mr. Ballard to represent the Tri-County Martin Luther King Coalition?
Seeing none.
We'll still read the proclamation. Shanie, thank you.
Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King inspired millions with his compassion and ideals of equality and was the driving force behind his civil rights movement focused on creating a peaceful society tolerant of all races, cultures, and nationalities. And whereas the celebration of Dr. King's birthday is intended to commemorate his life and legacy, as well as a chance for citizens to reaffirm their commitment to the basic Constitution principles that all men are created equal. And whereas this day is a reminder of the importance of serving others through community service and coming together to focus on common concerns and that improving the quality of life for all races, cultures, and nationalities is a responsibility of all members of society. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the Wycomico County Executive join the Tri-County Martin Luther King Coalition in celebrating the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Thanks, Shanie. Good morning, Ms. Hurley, how are you?
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. We are continuing with cross-training in the council office this month, so Mrs. Lynn Engel will be reading the agenda items this morning.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing on the capital improvement program for the county for the period of July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2029, and the capital budget for fiscal year 2025. A public hearing notice was posted on the county's website and published in the local newspapers for each of the public hearings this morning, and Mrs. Hurley is going to present the information for the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, so to get started, I'll read each department and the totals through fiscal year '29 that are shown in the capital improvement program. There are copies of the capital improvement program summary page on the table as you walk in the door for those in the audience that would like to follow along. Once I'm finished reading the totals by department, the council president will then open the floor for the public hearing. So to get started, we're looking at the general fund. We have the Health Department first, that's $2,330,000. Emergency Services, that's $26,560,000. Elections, $1 million. Corrections, $22,523,000. General Services, $1,500,000. Public Library, $3,101,400. Warwick Community College, $9,515,625. Board of Education, $4 million. Public Works Engineering, $6,800,000. Public Works Water and Sewer, $925,000. Public Works Road, $5,350,000. Civic Center, $17,837,500. Recreation and Parks, $24,219,991,000. And for the enterprise funds, we have Public Works Solid Waste, that's $43,010,000. Tourism, $640,000. An Airport, $68,027,350. Total for all funds through fiscal year '29 is $236,835,866. Mr. President.
So now we open the floor to the public. Anyone that have any comments they'd like to make in reference to the capital improvement program for fiscal years 2025 to 2029, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Brian Rigger, a Wycomico County resident and the Chief Finance and Operations Officer for Wycomico County Public Schools. First, I'd like to express my appreciation to the council for the support of the board's capital plan in recent years. In FY '24, the county was able to support our final funding request for the Mardella Middle and High School project, as well as funding to support the development of schematic design for a replacement for Fruitland Primary School. Mardella is currently on track and on budget, and we anticipate project completion in advance of the start of the 2025-26 school year. We look forward to faculty and students moving into completed Phase III classrooms later this spring. The Fruitland Primary project is also currently on schedule. Schematic design has been completed and received approval from the Interagency Commission on School Construction. The FY '25 WCPS Capital Improvement Plan was submitted to county government last fall in order for its priorities to be considered in the county CIP. As usual, our CIP includes a prioritized list of capital projects based on a detailed analysis of data by our planning and construction department. Also, as usual, our CIP includes projections for capital projects going out five years. Our first priority for capital funding remains the Fruitland Primary project. At this point, we've selected a construction manager for the project, and we're working with the construction manager, the previously selected architect, and stakeholders on design development. Our request will allow the project to continue moving forward and avoid cost escalations that would be incurred if the project were to be put on hold. Priorities 2, 3, and 4 are HVAC systemic renovations at three schools, Fruitland Intermediate, Westside Intermediate, and Salisbury Middle. Dr. Sauffer and I will return later today for the work session in case the council has any questions regarding our CIP requests. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Jim Atkins, Wycomico County. Each council member should have a copy of what I'm getting ready to go through, just so if you have any questions or can't keep up, it's there. You will notice there are notations of certain pages and page numbers. Those are the pages, page numbers, that correlate with your briefing book and the budget. So if you see a page, it'll go right to the briefing book. On November 14 of 2023, a public hearing was held on the CIP. This public hearing started at 7:00 p.m. and was finished at 7:07 p.m., seven minutes. It was attended by only three to four people from the public. No details on any requests for funding, no mention of the $4 million to be spent on Fruitland Intermediate. The county executive had stated previously about CIP meetings that is disheartening when only four or five people show up to public hearings. Maybe the poor attendance is due to lack of information being given to the public. When you are requesting $182 million CIP, some detail would be nice. December 19 of 2023, a CIP was submitted to the council with no further details given to the public. Total funding for the CIP presented to the council that day changed each year except for fiscal year '29 from what was presented at the public hearing on November 14. Fiscal year '25 had $2.8 million less than was presented to the public. Fiscal year '26 had $3.6 million increase over what was presented to the public. Fiscal year '27 had a decrease of $8.4 million from what was given to the public. Fiscal year '28 had an additional $7.35 million added to what was presented to the public. Fiscal year '29 stayed the same. A few questions about the CIP and the budget.
Mr. Atkins, if I could just give you a point of clarification, I know in your first paragraph you mentioned that no mention of the $4 million to be spent on Fruitland.
Yes.
You did say Fruitland Intermediate. I know you meant Fruitland Primary.
Thank you. Yes, I did. Thank you. Questions about the CIP. Fiscal year '29, the hurdle building. We have a floor replacement of $200,000, HVAC at $500,000, an elevator replacement at $200,000, for a total of $900,000. At the last council meeting, after the discussion about the purchase of the Mount Herman property, this building was referenced to being listed for sale on January 2, has returned money to the county. Election building, $150,000 for design plans for addition to the building, $850,000 for building additions. Has there been any thought given to the moving of the election board to the hurdle building, which plan is upgraded at a cost of $90,000 rather than spending $1 million on the election building and still owning the hurdle building? Elections would have a larger building to work out of, and the building on Stone Hill Road could be sold. Fiscal year '24, Barron Creek Road, $850,000. Why does this continue to be shown in the CIP budget? The prior CIP for Barron Creek Road has expired. The permits, the plans, and the drawings are out of date. $253,000 of the $850 which was in the CIP has already been spent, so even if it were still in planning, it should only be $597,000 requested. In the Detail section, page 17 of the budget, shows this as an existing project. No details or plans or explanation of where the funds are coming from. This has been shown this way for a number of years. Apparently, this is just a cut and paste each year for the budget. Fiscal year '25, the Civic Center, elevator and escalator replacement. Per the last meeting, escalators have been replaced and are working properly. So why is this included as an item? Is this another cut and paste? $4.1 million planned for roof replacement. Apparently much needed, but the question is, has any study or thought been given at this time to put solar on the roof of the Civic Center? As this seems to be the ideal time to do that, as well as potential cost savings for electrical use at the Civic Center? And are there any energy grants which might offset the cost of a new roof? Fiscal year '25, the Board of Ed, CIP. At the public hearing, the CIP showed $3.963 million planned for HVAC work, $997,000 at Fruitland, Westside, $2.966 million. Nothing's planned or shown for a new Fruitland school. The CIP presented to the council shows $4 million for planning of the Fruitland school, but shows nothing for the HVAC projects. What happened to them? Where'd they go? Emergency Services, both years show $150,000 for radio dispatch consulates for a total of $300,000. This states that it would allow for the dispatch center to operate anywhere with Internet services. Are there contingencies such as what is now in place where the backup to the 911 center is the sheriff's office? How is it that the new public safety building is not large enough for Emergency Services Department to be included? Requesting $1.5 million for a mobile command unit to serve as a 911 backup. I thought the consulates and the Internet were going to be used for that. A command unit is a necessity, but $1.5 million for a command unit? Finally, the CIP is asking for $36.4 million in pay-go through fiscal year '29. It has $23.3 million to-be-determined funds in it. The Board of Ed has nothing showing fiscal year '26 through fiscal year '29. Is this accurate? Public Works, nothing showing for water, sewer in fiscal year '26 through '29. I don't believe that's possible. Please take a look at the CIP and make the appropriate determinations. This type of excessive spending cannot continue. The county has to stop spending money on unnecessary projects and get back to bettering the county and its current resources. The hard road is not the easy road, but is often the wiser road. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Any other comments in reference to the capital improvement program? Okay. This is public hearing on the capital improvement program. Mrs. Hurley?
The next item on the agenda is another public hearing on Resolution 02-2024, which is authorizing the county executive to apply for a $400,000 grant from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development through the CDBG program for the Epoch Dream Center project located within the town of Hebron, Maryland. We have Gary Pusey, Planning Manager here, and also Jimmy, or I'm sorry, Johnny Kendall, Community Development Planner, if there are any questions.
This time we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 02-2024. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please, and state your name, county of residence, and your concern. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 02-2024. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 02-2024. So moved. Second?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution passes.
Okay, the next item is another public hearing on Resolution 03-2024, which is to amend the fiscal year 2024 capital budget to authorize the county executive to utilize the existing CARES Act funding grant for the new Fuel Farm project. And we have Mr. Tony Rudy here, Airport Manager, if there's any questions.
This time we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution Number 03-2024. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none. That concludes the public hearing for Resolution 03-2024. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 03-2024. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions for Mr. Rudy? All those in favor of Resolution 03-2024 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution passes.
All right, the next item is Resolution 04-2024, confirming the appointment of Michael Zavvy as Deputy Director of the Department of Public Works. And Mr. Bunkie Lufman is here, if there are any questions.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 04-2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Did have a meeting and closed session in reference to this, just so the public is aware. All those in favor of Resolution 04-2024 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution passes.
All right, next is Resolution 05-2024, amending the FY '24 Budget Position Control Document Exhibit F by transfer of funds from undesignated fund balance to salary for a Deputy Director of the Department of Public Works, position 100516.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 05-2024.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you.
And the next item is Resolution 06-2024, amending the FY '24 budget request from departments. Position changes, Exhibit E, to reflect appropriate salary for the previously regraded positions, 100875 and 10023, or excuse me, 100023 for the Wycomico County Circuit Court. And Mrs. Melissa Leahy, Court Administrator, is here, if there's any questions.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 06-2024.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Didn't we have a closed session, I mean, a work session on this?
Mm-hmm.
This was the one, right?
No, not this one.
Not this one?
This wasn't one of them?
This wasn't it?
She came before for another position, but not these two specific ones.
Okay, okay.
Any other discussions, questions? All those in favor of Resolution 06-2024 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution passes.
Okay, and that is all we have this morning.
Okay. We have the internal auditor, Angie Chantel. Good morning, Angie.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm doing well, how are you?
Good. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 07-2024.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? You got the floor.
Good morning, Madam County Executive Giordano, President Cannon, and council members. The Institute of Internal Auditors publishes an international professional practices framework comprising of standards for internal auditing. Attribute Standard 1110 entitled organizational independence states the chief audit executive must confirm to the board at least annually the organizational independence of the internal audit activity. In Wycomico County, the equivalent of the Board of Directors is the county council. And in accordance with Attribute Standard 1110, I am pleased to provide the following declaration. As chief audit executive for the Office of the Internal Auditor of Wycomico County, Maryland, I declare that, to the best of my knowledge and belief, there's been no contraventions of auditor independence requirements or any applicable code of professional conduct in relation to the audits performed by Wycomico County.
Okay.
All right.
Any questions? All those in favor of Resolution 07-2024 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution passes. Thank you very much. This time we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make in general, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Mr. Sarbanes. Mr. Sarbanes is a previous member, president of the Wycomico County Council. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you. It was a long time ago. God bless you. Thank you for, thank you all for serving. It says three minutes. Geez, I, it takes me, it takes me that long to get a breath. Anyhow, let me get to what I want to talk about. One, I live, I back up on Shoemaker Pond, and that, that's an issue. It's a, it has been a beautiful pond. It can be maintained. It has been maintained in the past. You've received many letters from me, so I thought I'd show up in person. We really need to do something with that pond. People say, well, it's a city responsibility, no, it's a county. If you look at it, my address is 1108 Granby's Run, Salisbury, Maryland, which means I live in the city of Salisbury. The city of Salisbury is in Wycomico County, the last time I checked. So that requires both city and county action, and I really hope you'll do something. Now, that's one concern I have. The other one, if I don't read this, I'll stumble around, so let me read it to you. "I think our community is facing a major issue that requires both county and city action. Unfortunately, many residents have no idea what actions you are thinking of taking or taking until it's too late. When I served on the county council as president many years ago, 2002 to '06, The Daily Times was a valuable newspaper with reporters that contacted me and other council members on a regular basis so that they could report on what was taking place in the county. That also applied to Salisbury as well. Frankly, as you know, like I do, that does not exist today. We need to correct that. You may be doing good things, great things, you may not be doing good things or great things. People don't know. I take a lot of pride in myself of trying to stay up with what's going on with the federal, state, and local government. It's important. People need to be informed, and God bless you, they're not. People ask me, what's going on with the county? I don't know. I guess they ask me because I served on the county council at one time. I don't know." So I really would encourage you, and it applies to the city. I went and spoke at the city council meeting. We need to do something about keeping people informed, whether you hire somebody to do it, whether you have somebody internally, maybe that, that's the way to go. There's someone internally that can do it. But we need to be informed. You may be doing great things, you may not be doing great things, but we need to know about it. And thank you for serving.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sarbanes. Any other public comments?
Morning, council. I have a report that I prepared. I have 10 copies. I don't know what the best way to distribute this is.
You can hand it to Mr. Benson, and he'll give them to you.
So this is a slight modification of a report that I originally prepared for my place of worship, Wycomico River Friends Meeting. There were a couple individuals there who were concerned about possibly doing some outreach in the local detention center. And so I prepared this as sort of a introduction to what the, what the jail's all about.
Thanks, sir.
And in doing that research, I developed some concerns. So you'll, you'll see in there, in 2002, a letter was sent to the then-president of the county council, who I do not believe is Mr. Sarbanes at that point, just yet. But essentially, this is from the Department of Justice's Civil Rights Division outlining some constitutional rights violations occurring within the jail. And so I sort of went on this wild goose chase, trying to track down any sort of improvements to the, to the problem since then. You'll see in there, there's a couple lawsuits that have been filed by inmates in 2020 and 2021, in addition to other years, alleging mistreatment, misconduct by staff within the detention center. And so it seems to me that nothing has really been done, at least not as far as the public's aware. I filed a Public Information Act request with the Department of Corrections for the county, essentially to see if anything had been done. I asked for stuff about, you know, inmate welfare, conditions within the jail, all these sorts of things, any reports that are provided to the county executive or the county council. As you can see in there, the response I received from the, the legal firm that contacted me stated that the Department of Corrections does not prepare any sort of report like this. And they have minimal to no documentation that they were able to provide me on inmate welfare. So as far as I can tell, there's nothing that would be a change to this pattern of inmate mistreatment and lack of accountability. I do see that in the CIP for the next coming five years, there is $22 million allocated for corrections. I think that's great. But I think in addition to that, there needs to be some accountability. So I'm proposing, you know, possibly an annual or quarterly report by the Department of Corrections to either the county executive or council, essentially outlining what's going on, what changes, if any, are being made within the jail, essentially an overview, because as of right now, it seems like there is absolutely nothing either visible to county leadership or the public coming out of the detention center.
Thank you, Ms. Hammer.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good morning, council. My name's Brian Griffith. I'm on here on perhaps of RS Mitchua, which is a Wycomico County resident. I'm here to express my concerns that are related to the eliminate the dispenser as a part or in whole. As I read the new legislative request, 1611, it appears to me... As I read the new legislative request, 1611, it appears to me that the purpose of this request is to eliminate the dispensary as a whole. The changes to the wording from the prior version of the legislative request, 1611, appear to, at least to me, to have moved from a simple hybrid system to totally eliminate the dispensary in its entirety. I would like to address this request in several reasons. First, I would like to know where the loss of revenue from the county budget, my county budget, will come from. As a taxpaying citizen of Wacomico County and a owner of multiple businesses, I pay more taxes than most county and owner of local business, excuse me, of individuals deal. I also know that the dispensary is not a county agency, in fact, that the dispensary is an entity that I and all taxpayers of Wacomico County are part owners of. The profits it generates is, are given to the county general fund and serve as benefit not only myself, but all citizens of Wacomico County. Therefore, going to create an income county budget to replace the lost revenue, the money not benefits myself as a resident, but also in effect belongs to my fellow residents. Secondly, I know Wacomico County has a property tax revenue cap as well as property tax transfers. This is in place to entire businesses, people to bring industry and homes to Wacomico County. We are also at the maximum piggyback income tax of 3.2%. That being said, you can raise our taxes to make up the lost revenue for the taxpayers from the dispensary. Therefore, my question is simply, which county fees are going to be raised, or which services are going to be cut to give back the money we will be losing from the dispensary? Even under a hybrid system, let alone the disclusion of the system as a whole, as it appears, the latest version of the legislative request, 1611, seems to be read. Finally, I would like to know if it is mine and my fellow taxpayers' money is going to handful of a local business who were allowed of the dispensary being in existence. When they open these businesses, what are the ramifications of pricing I will receive when penalized for these establishments? Will my food and drink prices go down if the businesses can, as they claim, achieve lower cost for, of the goods sold? In fact, is this a result of a change in the system? Will some of the savings be passed along to the consumer? Or is this simply be more income and a handful of local businesses at the expense of the taxpaying citizens of the county? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Any other public comments?
Jim Atkins, Wacomico County. Today, I'd like to speak about two things, which should be a priority for both the county executive and the county council. Didn't know Mr. Sarbanes was going to be here and speak, but I'm going to follow him up. Two items that need to be addressed are perception and transparency. Both of these concepts are essential for government to earn and keep the trust of their constituents. Going through some of the things which have been said or done during the past year, hopefully will bring awareness to how your constituents should be treated. Concerning all the violence occurring in the schools, last January, the Board of Education stated that they had plans by this January to have five additional SROs in place. Has that happened? We don't know, we haven't heard. On September the 17th of 2023, a person was nominated to the Wacomico County Personnel Board. This nomination failed, but to my knowledge, there has not been another person nominated to fill that position. Perception. Is this an unnecessary position or a political favor? 1123, 2023, the council proposed a vehicle policy for the personnel manual. Council going to review questions that the executive and her people had and schedule another work session. Transparency. What is the resolution to this proposal? Where is the other work session? I still see numerous county vehicles that don't even have a county sticker on them, just local government tags. My favorite item, which you're going to discuss later today, is in January of '23, an attorney representing the county named Mr. Karpinski was terminated by the county executive. Stated at that time was that he had cost the county a large sum of money in a lawsuit and was no longer wanted by the county executive. She also stated that she had filed a complaint with the State Ethics Board concerning his conduct. Then she wanted to hire failed gubernatorial candidate Dan Cox to replace Mr. Karpinski. This request was rejected by the council after a large public outcry and opinions which county council members developed that he would not be a good fit for the county. Now we come to today. The county executive has requested the council to approve the hiring of Mr. Karpinski to represent the county in a lawsuit filed against the county and the council body in ACP. Please don't miss this point. The county executive wishes to rehire an attorney whom she fired and whom she filed a complaint with the State Ethics Board. My perception is that Mr. Karpinski must be an outstanding attorney, as well as an individual, to want to be involved with Wacomico County in any way, after the way he was previously treated. In the early fall, it was announced through a Facebook post that the executive had signed an agreement to have a safari in the quarry event. All of this was news to the neighbors surrounding this area, who had been told previously about planned use for this location, and none of these uses involved Jeeps or other vehicles. After community outrage over this was presented at a couple of council meetings, an open hearing was held with the promoter. At the end of the hearing, I believe it was made clear that this would be a very quiet, properly run event and would not disturb the neighborhood. Perception and transparency. If all this had been explained to the community prior to the announcement, I believe a lot of the community homeowners would have been more receptive to trying this event. The final item is the deputy administrator position. For months, we have heard both sides present their position on how this was handled, and everyone is entitled to their opinion if the proper procedures were followed. Perception. The city, citizens of this county voted for a charter amendment to have this position presented in a legislative meeting. The purpose was to allow the citizens to become aware of the person and respond back to their representatives if they had strong concerns about the person being presented for the position. One of my strongest concerns was this person did not live in the county and really didn't have a homegrown knowledge of the county. One of the concerns as a council was the process of secession if the need arises. Since the deputy did not live in the county, he would not be eligible to place Mr. Lufman if the need arises. Everyone in the executive and legislative branch worked for the citizens of the counties. The citizens need to be kept informed, and not through social posts, but through county websites. Projects being discussed, undertaken, or completed need to be presented to the citizens. You can't discuss something in the council meetings and then not follow through with the results or decisions to make the public aware. Two or three times in the past year, there have been hearings and open meetings with the auditors of the county. Now, all of a sudden, there have been two closed meetings with the auditor. Perception. Auditor has found something or someone that is not being honest. If this is the case, the citizens are entitled to know. When something good happens, such as larger-than-expected pay raises for county employees, this needs to be made public, and the people that push for it recognize. When tax credits are given to volunteer firefighters of this county, the people who supported and worked for it to happen need to be recognized. Give credit to the people that deserve it for their effort and hard work. There are three ways that you can use credit. You can take credit. This is the least favorable way of doing it. If you are truly worthy of credit, it will be given to you. Share credit. It's a good recognition, but must have a true consolidated effort. And the most important credit is credit that you can give. The best way, recognize people for what they have done. There are many more examples I could give of perception or transparency, but hopefully everyone has realized that things need to change if you expect the citizens to support you. The amount of closed-door sessions seem to be increasing, and a lot of business is being done out of sight. The citizens need to know what the county council and the executive are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir Atkins. Any other public comments? That concludes public comments. Counsel comments?
Um, yes, I'd like to say Katrina Purnell is here, representing Tri-County Coalition.
How are you, Katrina?
Come on.
There you are.
She's a member.
We have proclamation for you.
Go to the podium, I'm gonna sit and read it.
First of all, good morning. For my tardiness, like Mr. Sarbanes, I'm asthmatic, and the change in the weather makes a big difference in my voice and my breathing, so thank you so very much.
I'm gonna read this to you, I already read it, but I'm gonna read it to you. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King inspired millions with his compassion ideals of equality and was the driving force behind a civil rights movement focused on creating a peaceful society tolerant of all races, cultures, and nationalities. And whereas the celebration of Dr. King's birthday is intended to commemorate his life and legacy, as well as a chance for citizens to reaffirm their commitment to the basic constitution principles that all men are created equal. And whereas this day is a reminder of the importance of serving others through community service and coming together to focus on common concerns, and that improving the quality of life for all races, cultures, and nationalities is a responsibility of all members of society. And therefore, now therefore, the Wacomico County Council and the Wacomico County Executive join the Tri-County Martin Luther King Coalition in celebrating the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King, done this 16th day of January 24th. Do you like to make a comment?
Thank you so very much. Just as a point of information, last night was my 39th celebration, the Martin Luther King celebration. Our nation is one year behind us. When it was declared to be a holiday, it would not start until the next year. My friends and I, we want it to start now. After going to Washington DC, regardless of the rain, or the snow, or whatever, for 10 years to petition the United States to declare it a holiday, we wanted to start it then, and we did. I thank your support over the years. As you, Shaney was, excuse me, Ms. Shields. When you go to school with somebody, I try to be polite. It made me think of one of his sayings. Hate cannot stop hatred. Fear cannot bring love. We need to love one another regardless of who we are. That's why when I look around the room, I see a lot of people that have on different colors, clothes, that is, and attire. That's not God's way, we are all equal in His sight. My desire is that we recognize the differences that we had, so we can build on those. If we don't talk to one another, we can't achieve very much. I'm not a proponent of always wanting to think the wrong way, but I respect a lot of people on the council, because I have had opinions with them, Mr. Hastings. And I have shared with him individually, because I, that's how I was raised, that if you have something, voice your opinion. So I thank you for this. And most of all, I hope this gets to our young people. All 39 years, we've used our young people as ushers. Recent years, we give them their community service hours, but it's letting them see what goes on as far as our county is and what we can do for our future. My next last is I want to recognize our morning program, that every year, we have a morning program for all our children to attend. We average from 1,500 to 2,000 kids. Bus drivers who are private contractors provide us with that transportation at their own cost. It is not a one-person show, it is a group of people that are working very hard so that we can grow our community in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katrina.
Over there?
If I can't, I need.
Am I getting to be a star?
Open it up.
I know I'm very talkative, but Mr. Cannon, you did not say, besides all the things that Mr. Sarbanes did, he was a great principal.
Yes.
I would like to congratulate Freddie Mitchell on his retirement after the service he's done for Shore Up.
Fifty-four years.
Fifty-four years.
Yeah, right.
The many programs that come through Shore Up are things that help people in our community. Youth employment, youth training, help them get their diploma, senior citizen centers, and Head Start is one of the biggest programs in getting for early childhood education, weatherization, fuel assistance, you name it, they have done it. So again, I'd congratulate Fred for his service to our community.
Thank you, Shaney. Any other council comments? Josh?
I'll just say, on the way in, driving in this morning, I was listening to NPR, and the national discussion they were having on there was regarding the internet, and basically how it's, it's not really worth much these days. You know, we had the, I remember the dreams of what would become the internet, the information superhighway, where everyone would get access to free information, and we all would be made better for it. But of course, as you all know, that didn't happen in the same way. Now, if you want to go find information, you have to pay a subscription to, to see just basic news. You have to, you know, you have to have an account to be able to review that information. And by the way, and, and what they were saying in this, of course, was, you know, Google, the, the main place that folks go to search for the, for, for information, they have a 92% market share, which of course is, used to be, used to be called a monopoly in the, in the United States. And we used to break those things up, all for competition. But basically, the information that you get when you search on them nowadays, it just goes to a, you know, into a for-profit paid advertisement. So folks can't get the information that they want. Why does all that, what does all that have to do with all this? Well, what I continue to hear in each of the comments of the folks that come up to speak today was about transparency. I think we, as a county, need to continue to double down on transparency, even when we can't trust, we can't do anything about the function of the internet, or social media, or any of that, but I think we, as a county, continue to make sure that we are putting out as much information, being as clear as possible, on what's happening, when it's happening, and, and, and really try to lean into that, especially at a time where we can't rely on the current system to provide us the information that we have known for the last, you know, 25 years or so.
Joe? James?
I, I was gonna say something similar to what Josh was saying about transparency, and Mr. Tony, Sarbanes came up, it's Tony, right? Sarbanes came up and spoke on transparency as well, and how, how we don't, you know, we, how do we, is it, is it the independent, and on our county website is where we promote our capital improvement? I would like to see us promote it in, in more platforms, if we, if it's possible. I, I know we, we had a public informations officer we were gonna fund last year, and I think that would be, that would be something that I would be in favor for, just, just so people can see what's going on in the community. see what's going on in the community. But yeah, I'm all for more transparency. Thank you.
John?
It seems like transparency is a word of the day. I'll be transparent about something. I had the opportunity to speak to some of our Eastern Shore delegation in the past couple weeks about various matters, and I'm sure a lot of folks in the audience and is watching on TV have heard the news about the budget shortfalls that's gonna be happening in Annapolis. I'm hearing anywhere 600, 800, 700 million dollars, a lot that's, that they don't even know yet. We went through this back in '06, '07, '08, and I know we received, this county receives a disparity grant, and I've heard people say, oh, they won't cut that from us, you know, they won't reduce that. When the state gets pushed and they have to make decisions, they're gonna be looking at, I guess you can call it the low-hanging fruit, where they can get rid of, get rid of funding that won't affect them politically on the other side of the bay, that's what we call it, you know? So back in, and I see Mr. Outen sitting in the audience, I think it was '07 or '08, the state cut $7 million out of our roads money, just like that. I mean, it was gone. That was our roads budget. That was what we worked with, with our roads, and it was gone. So to sit here and think that we're immune from what happens at the state level would be a mistake. So I'll just, not be a barrier of bad news, but we'll be transparent about that, let everybody know we could be seeing issues come along in the future. Thank you.
Yeah. Josh?
Good morning, everybody. As I told somebody earlier, it's always nice to see people out there instead of us sitting up here talking to three people in the audience. And to echo Councilman Joe Holloway's thing about the funding, I think the last figure I saw was a $761 million budget shortfall in revenues in the state of Maryland in FY25, which is what we're coming into. I know several of the council members are concerned with the, some of the items in the CIP. Not to say that they're not good projects, but the big question is, can we afford them? And is it realistic to bring them to the finish line in this timeframe? I think we have to ask some serious questions and probably gonna make some hard choices, but I think we can work together to do what's best for the county without spending money we don't have. If the money's not coming into the state, they can't pass it down to the county. I think I saw an 8%, drop in our highway user revenues next year. Well, that's your roads and bridges. So hopefully it won't be too painful, but I'm confident that we'll work together to do the right thing.
President, Shani? You good? Okay. In the president's comments, I just would like to thank the individuals who spoke today. We always do encourage public input at the podium, and we really do appreciate that. Some of the discussions today were extremely detailed in their report as far as what they did, and we do appreciate that because, you know, we have to work on this on a regular basis with the brief books, whatever other information we might have as council members. And when I see individual members in the community who put that type of work into a presentation for the council, we really do appreciate it. We do recognize what goes in, goes behind that in order to review the material, and succinctly enough to note, to be so open and matter of fact about what you present for this council. It's a lot of work, and we really do appreciate that. Entertaining motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions followed by closed work sessions pursuant to the general provisions, Article Section 3-305B8, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation to protect the county's legal position, and a closed administrative session pursuant to the general provisions, Article Section 3-104, to discuss internal auditor projects. We should note that we will also be reconvening legislative session briefly following our work session in our closed session. It's a motion. Second? Hoes in favor?
Aye.
Legislative meeting is adjourned. First item we have on the open work session is the county executive update.
All right. Good morning, county council. I know you have a very full agenda, so instead of me giving my updates, there were several topics that you wanted some updates on, so I have no problem going over those, and then we'll just move on from those. So the first item that there was a question about was the local highway safety plan update. There was a letter sent by MDOT on December 11th. Right now, Wycomico County does not have a local highway safety plan. The purpose of this type of plan is to reduce fatalities for motorists, cyclists, excuse me, and pedestrians. So jurisdictions with this particular plan, they are eligible for federal grant opportunities for bike lanes, pedestrian walkways, sidewalks, et cetera. If Planning and Zoning decides to move forward with it, Public Works and Planning and Zoning will research funding opportunities to assist. Right now, the city is doing that. They call it Vision Zero. At this point in time, I don't know, based on people that I've talked with, I don't see many residents that interested in bike lanes in the county, but if that is something that this council decides that you would like me to pursue, we'll talk to Planning and Zoning and Public Works to continue on that safety plan. So that's where we are with that. It's funny.
Any questions from everyone?
Oh, any questions on that?
I can say, I've got a statement to make. I've not heard any of my constituents in District 5 express an interest in having bike lanes. I'm sure there's somebody out there that would argue with me over that. But in the years on this council that I've served, we have a long list of complaints about things that happened in the county and the city, a long list. I mean, you know, the stuff on the ponds, to, you know, stop signs, to you name it. But I've never heard any more complaints than I've heard about bike lanes. You know, people say, why are all these bike lanes when I can ride around Salisbury and never see one person on a bike lane? Now, I'm sure there is people that use them, but I don't think the citizens and, a lot of the citizens would be interested in bike lanes in the county, so.
I agree.
There's some money saved right there if we don't go that direction.
There we go. The only part of that, I think, would be, you know, sidewalks and things like that. I know we've talked about sidewalks in Pittsville outside the schools and things like that.
Sidewalks aren't bike lanes.
Right. No, absolutely. It's just part of that, so. But yes, I 100% agree. Shoemaker Pond with Mr. Sarbanes here. So this is the pond update. So the city did annex the pond, the entire pond in 1928, so I did not know that. This was all Mr. Wilber, so I need to give him some credit. It was also re-annexed in phases, like throughout a century, so pieces of the pond also were re-annexed by the city. So right now, out of the 29 houses, we have four county houses that are on the pond. So I have talked to the mayor, I have talked to the city administrator, and we have no problem continuing the original agreement where the city would buy the chemicals, we would spray, but the city is responsible for the initial cleanup. The HOA, from what I've understood, has agreed to pay a third of the cost, and the city understands that because it is a county, or sorry, because it is a city pond, that they are responsible. We wouldn't pave a city road, they wouldn't pave a county road, so we're looking at it the same way. And from when I talked to the city administrator and the mayor, they understand that they will be responsible for clearing the pond, but we have no problem re-initiating that agreement that I think the late Bob Culver and Jake Day had. So that's where we are with the pond.
What do we anticipate the cost sharing to be?
Well, right now, for the estimate that they had was right around 60,000, so a third of that would be from the HOA. If the county agreed to pay, it would be a third of that, so about 20 grand, if we decided to go that route.
Is it cash or in kind? Our portion, I'm serious, I mean, our portion.
I guess.
Yeah. My understanding is they would bring in a contractor that would get rid of the growth because the growth is such that we couldn't get someone in to spray, is my understanding. So the city has to get it to a point where we can get our people in to spray, and it's not there.
So we can get our people in, or we can get a contractor in to spray?
We have people with the licenses on staff.
Yeah, we have the licensing through Raccoon Parks.
But they, but the city does not. So that's why, and that's the thing that the county executive Culver and Mayor Day worked out, and then at some point, it fell by the wayside. I've heard each side blame the other. I don't know what happened. And then it grew up, so that's where we're at today.
Timeline?
So for.
Timeline for the project? A timeline as to when?
I have no idea how long it would take a contractor to get in there. It's a pretty large pond.
I believe the contract was over three years, so there would be three treatments, was what we saw, but that was Mayor Day, so I don't know that they would need to go back out to bid or, you know, what have you.
Any idea when we would begin, when we would start the project?
It'd probably be a city contract, so that would, you know, we'd have to talk to the mayor and city administrator.
I just recently, on Friday, got a phone call from him getting more information, so he has the plaits, he understands all of that. If we would be willing to move forward, I can let him know that, but that's the update that we have right now.
Is there any other ponds in Wycomico County that they've had these issues? I thought there was an agreement, like for Parker's Pond or the pond up near the State Police barracks at one time?
This is the only one I know. This is with hydrola issues. I mean, the thing, and Lee can talk about this, that we tend to put money into are the dams, you know, Leonard's Mill and what have you. So, but Lee, do you know, I'm not aware of the Parkers.
I know that we've offered technical assistance, Parks and Rec has, to some of the neighborhood HOAs on some of the ponds, on how to mitigate some of the algae and hydrola issues, but other than, you know, like Monkey said, it's pretty much, we take care of paying for the dams, which maintains their waterfront, so.
Just bring up the obvious, of course. You know, it is a pond, so it's always going to have these issues, and of course, we still have a lot of homes, you say four, that are directly on the pond itself, but of course...
There's 29 homes for county residents.
Yeah, for, so 29 homes that are, assuming, have septic systems?
Twenty, 25 of them are.
Four are septic system, correct?
I think, I guess. I just know that four residents are counties.
Yeah, the other 25 have been annexed into the city.
I think that's kind of what I'm getting at. You know, my parents used to always tell me stories about them playing in that pond for many years, and that was well-known. Of course, we can never do that again, but we, if we want to ever get back to that, what we have to do is, of course, is hook up those septic systems. Every time they flush that toilet, those nutrients are just flowing basically into the, into the pond, so we really need to hook up as many septic systems in and around, not the ones just directly on the pond, that, you know, the waters move pretty easily below surface to carry that. So there's still a ton of homes that are in and around, you know, within, within even an eighth of a mile of Shoemaker Pond that could be hooked up to public sewer, and I think that'll help the issue. In addition to, you know, the park itself, their green infrastructure work that you could do in the park, you know, there's currently no vegetative, there's little to no vegetative screen that's along the park, along the water itself. You know, that's usually what you use for nutrient uptake, and that could help with water clarity issues and other kind of things, so we could probably move in that direction, implement it into our regular maintenance of the county park.
And just so council knows, we looked at various financial, what's the word I'm looking for, like opportunities to where like DNR might be able to help us out, but unfortunately, hydrola is not considered.
Well, it's invasive, but it's not something they give you money to get rid of.
Right, yeah. It's invasive, right, but they won't give you money to get rid of it. So we've even looked at other avenues for, excuse me, for funding, so.
Any other questions? Great, thank you. Glad we're making progress. That's good.
Yeah, yeah. Guaranteed income program. So Ms. Mary Ashanti had sent us an email about this. PG County is piloting this program. I'm not sure who asked about this, I'm not sure which council member, but it will be interesting to see what comes of this program. As of now, I don't really see Wycomico County moving in that direction, but the guaranteed income is for, I'm not really sure who asked that. I don't know who I'm directing this to.
It went to all council members. Her email, she specifically asked that that email be sent to all council members.
So which council member asked me to do an update on it?
Well, it was a follow-up on that email.
Oh, just on that email in particular? Okay. If you didn't read that email, it's two groups of citizens, like younger kids, and then an older generation, that it's guaranteed income from the county. And like I said, before making any decision on that, I would assume that we would want to see the effects of it in a larger county like PG, so we'll see what happens with that, but I can, I mean, keep an eye on that as they move forward with that. I just don't see us now doing that, so. Okay. Trash on county roads. So this seems to be a very hot topic. We've all gotten various emails on various email chains with that. I brought Lee here with us, and actually, Monkey had invited him as well, so I'm gonna let him kind of talk a little bit about that and where we are with the trash.
I brought some pictures. I like to say, you're very, you're, I consider you to be one of our very best employees.
Well, I appreciate that.
The work that you've done over the years, and anytime we talk to you, you always manage, you take care of business all the time.
Well, thank you for that. Everybody likes...
Raise in the budget, make sure that...
Everybody loves pictures. I brought some pictures. This is, this is just something from last week. It's, it's pretty much all the time, but this is recent, so I can kind of give everybody an idea of what we're dealing with.
Great. Excellent. Thanks, buddy. These on the big screen, Lee.
Oh, Lord.
So this is actually Boundary Street?
Boundary, yeah. That's what I'm...
This is actually Boundary Street. We have to go to Boundary Street probably twice a month. This is generally what we find, but this is indicative of throughout the county, and there's, there's different types of litter in this county. There's, there's this type of litter where it's large deposits, you know, couches, tires, construction debris, people that just don't want to go to the landfill, and their trash ends up somewhere on the side of the road in big piles. Those are the things that we get a lot of calls about, I mean, in addition to other types of litter, but, but, but we, we go and it takes a lot of equipment to pick this up. So like I said, we probably go to Boundary Street twice a month, I would guess, somewhere around there, and this is generally what we find. When we do find these things, we go through the trash, we dig through it, and I dig through it. It's not fun, and I pull out mail because people that litter also don't think about the fact that they're leaving their mail in there, and I contact our sheriff's office, and they're very helpful. A lot of times, they'll respond, and they'll go knock on a door, and magically, the trash will pick itself up. But, you know, we used to have, so there's, there's those types of litter, and then there's, you know, probably what a lot of people notice is just your single-use litter that people are going down the road, they finish a water bottle, and it goes out the window, or a beer can, or whatever, and it's up and down the side of the road. That's, that's a little more time-consuming for us to pick up, but we do attempt to do that. Last winter, we tried to dedicate every Friday, as weather allowed or crews allowed, to go with some of the roads that we've had the most complaints on and pick up litter. As you're probably most aware, we used to have two litter control crews from the detention center. That was, I mean, we realize now exactly how big of a help that was. They not only would go and handpick roads, they would also do weed eating and things like that around guardrails, so we've had to try to figure out how to continue some of those operations without those two crews. I'm estimating that now, without them, we're picking up somewhere between 60%, 70% of what they were picking up, based on tonnages from when we had them to what we're turning in now. I do see a difference, you know, since 2020 in the amount of some of these, you know, huge dumps that we find. A lot of it, you know, it's either people doing contractor work around houses that are not wanting to go to the, to the dump, or landfill, excuse me, or sometimes there's people that they'll, they'll pay someone, just somebody with a truck to take their garbage to the landfill, and they don't want to cut into their profit margin, so it ends up going somewhere like Boundary Street. Sometimes you can tell that from the multiple addresses in the trash you'll find, but, but it is something that we don't like, it is something that we're not ignoring. So, you know, like I said, we have, in one of those pictures, you can see, you know, we have, actually have a grate all out there to pick it up, we have to have dump truck, and then we've, we actually, you're using our leaf vac to go and help pick up a lot of the stuff down the side of the road. It seems to be, make pretty quick work of it in most situations. So, you know, we are, we are trying, we have tried cameras in the past, trying to pinpoint exactly where it's gonna happen at, other than places like this, which there was cameras put up there and they were destroyed. Trying to pinpoint exactly where someone might litter is a challenge, so that's kind of like a needle in a haystack, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Lee, I want to thank you for all the quick responses you've given me over the years for trash, you know, alongside the road, and other things also. We seem to have two, two areas of interest on the... have two, um, two areas of interest on the east side, Brown Road and Twilley Ridge Road. They seem to be the ones that gain the most attention when it comes to large trash. And what, what is the reasoning now, I guess? I know we've got through, I know COVID was a reasoning before about not being able to have crews, inmate crews out. Is there more another reason? Then I heard that, you know, maybe some of them we won't want to be letting out due to the nature of the pond.
That's my understanding is, 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 and I don't know the inner workings of our detention center, but people that are held in the detention center, there's, you know, different types of offenders and there's some that are released, I guess, that would be our candidates for working on the road. And, and maybe the ones that are currently housed aren't the best candidates for being out on the road. That's, that's my understanding. We also want, you know, a guard with them. We don't want one of our guys with them. You know, that's another big thing. And I know the detention center is very short staffed. So that, that could also add into it. State Highway gets trustees from ECI, but that's a whole nother gamut and the requirements that come along with that. So that's, you know, it's, maybe there, there could be some more discussions with the detention center at some point to see if that, if that's something that it could ever come back. So.
Excuse me. Have you ever tried ECI?
Yeah, that's, like I said, State Highway uses ECI. They have this whole other program. I think Solid Waste has them and they require all these, you know, a lot of cameras. There 's a lot of requirements that come along with ECI.
Because I had used them for Houston Cemetery before. Or no, it wasn't. I take that back. It was Papa Hill.
And I'd also like that.
Take that back, Papa Hill.
The county does have a program, like a Clean Wycomico program. And even if someone doesn't go through that program, we have people that call us quite a bit that, that want to just do a neighborhood cleanup. And what we tell them is, we're very thankful that you would do that. And if you do that, don't worry about getting your, the trash to the solid waste. Let us know where you did it at. Put the bags somewhere. Call us. Let us know where they're at and we'll come pick them up and take them to Solid Waste. So that, that kind of takes that whole aspect out of it for them.
I told my wife that.
Don't you guys provide like bags and the pickers?
Yeah. If you go through the Clean Wycomico, they do. And I even think some of the ones that aren't quite as, you know, planned and so forth, we do provide pickers and trash bags. And we used to provide, you know, vests and, and things like that because yeah, it's always a concern, especially on, you know, more heavily traveled roads as a safety of people out there doing it. You know, the more rural roads is probably not as much of an issue, but.
If we can't get the inmates to come back, what, what can we do to get some of this trash up off the road? Do we, we hire somebody or what?
Well, that's, that's an option. The state has contracts out, has bids out for people that do that in addition to their ECI crews that come. So it, it would be something to look at what, what their contracts are and how they procure that, what the cost would be. We do actually have positions that are part-time mower operator slash people to pick up trash. And we've really not had any success in filling those positions. So that was one of the, you know, things that we tried to do to, to help dedicate someone out there to doing it. But, um, you know, last winter, we had a pretty good luck with the leaf vac and putting guys out, you know, certain days of the week, trying to handle some of the hotspots to get called in. So, you know, but that is something we could pursue would be possibly to hire it out.
Yeah.
You mentioned Clean, Clean Wycomico?
Mm-hmm.
So I think this comes down to what Mr. Sarbanes was saying. I wasn't aware we had a Clean Wycomico. It might be beneficial, maybe just that it'd be one project that we would promote to try to get, you know, people to participate. Cause I think it could be a very rewarding day for someone to do that. I did a cleanup at Cody Cox one time. We had a good time, even though you clean up trash. It's a, it's, it's a lot of camaraderie.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't, wouldn't hurt to do that. Do we, um, do we sort of search out? One thing I think we forget to do quite often is that we don't go to other counties or try to find out from other counties what, how they might address these concerns. And sometimes we just end up reinventing the wheel. And there could be issues. I can't believe we would be the only isolated county that would have problem with this or have problems with, with our recycling. So I, I think it'd be interesting to see maybe what other counties might suggest to possibly solve the problem. I was told that the, during COVID, that the, that the inmates were sent home with ankle bracelets to sort of relieve the congestion in the prison. And their incentive for going out was, I believe, a day off for every day they worked. They would get a day off their sentence. And I believe they got paid as well. But once they got home and they were on the ankle bracelet, it wasn't that relevant for them to want to leave and go out on the road. They were fine right where they were. So whether we need to reevaluate that incentive, that might be an option too to talk to corrections to see if there's any way to make it a greater incentive to get them out again.
Yeah. I mean, I definitely think it's a behavior issue. I mean, I remember when I was growing up, it was, you know, there was commercials on TV about don't litter and a lot of things like that. And I don't know how helpful that was, but I don't certainly don't seem to remember seeing quite as much as I've seen in the last two years.
What'd you find out legally? Because in some of these pictures you, you showed us beside the couch and the tires on the side of the road, you had a lot of pictures of addresses where you obviously had people. Legally, I don't know if that's a Mr. Wilber question or not, or maybe something for Sheriff Lewis. What is, what is the, what options do we have when you have an address in an envelope sitting in this, this pile of trash?
I, I blacked out the numbers on the addresses because I can't just assume that those people are the ones that did that. Because I do know that there are people that get hired to take their trash to the landfill and sometimes they don't, especially when you find like where that's at. There's addresses from somewhere way inside of Salisbury. So that seemed a little bit odd to me. But, um, but I do contact the sheriff's office and they're very helpful and they'll go knock on doors. And if they're able to get in touch with a resident, like I said, sometimes this, this, these things magically pick themselves up after the sheriff's office says, if you don't go pick it up, we're going to cite you. So, you know, I'm not sure the legality. And again, you would somehow probably have to prove that they did it.
I would recognize Bruce Robson in the audience back to Bruce. How are you? Yeah. Appreciate it. Bruce is one of the individuals who sent the emails to us and all of that. But he had his own pictures and that was of them and all their garb cleaning up on many days.
Yeah.
With Mr. Mark Angberg and, and, and quite a few others. So we appreciate your concern and your work that you're doing for us. Thank you.
Maybe at the next meeting we can put a comment.
Want to make a comment? You may make a comment.
Okay, sure.
I don't normally do that, but I think people should know, know who you are for what, for what you've been doing.
Yeah, Bruce Robson, Wycomico County. And I also want to thank the feedback I've gotten, you know, Mr. Outen very, called and was very thorough and council members who have helped point me in the right direction. Mr. Giordano gave a detailed response to some questions we have. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a huge issue and, and of course, money is, is an issue. And I say huge issue. It's, money is an issue. And if you ask me, would I rather see more money spent on education than on picking up litter? I'd say education. You know, but at the same time, you know, it just reflects so poorly on us, you know, I feel like. And, um, and, and it's, and it's so difficult to address because you go pick it up and a week later, you know, you tell Mr. Outen there, it's all, you know, dirty again. But, um, uh, one thing that strikes me is there are a lot of people, you, you referenced, you were involved with something, just in a little bit sort of taking up this issue. The number of people I've talked to said, oh yeah, I did that one time. Or yeah, my, my church does that on a regular basis. And so it would take a lot of organization, I think. But I just can't help but think that between maybe some county help with organization and then these public groups, you know, could, could make a dent on this, you know. Again, it wouldn't be easy, but they could make a dent on it, you know.
Thanks again. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, you know, just sort of one last thing. And this is, this is obvious, but nobody comes back from someplace they've been and says, oh man, you won't believe, and on a positive note, you won't believe how much litter I saw on the side of the road. No, but you certainly do hear people come back saying, oh man, I visited this place. It was clean, you know, et cetera, you know. And that's sort of what I think in terms of business, in terms of quality of life and all that, why it means a lot. One last thing, excuse me, you gave me the.
That was a 30 second timer.
Yeah, I spoke to Mr. Fons, everything. Most people know Mr. Fons is, he's, he's the litter guy. He picks up trash left and right.
Oh, he is.
He told me he went to a town in Vermont once and spent an hour walking around looking for litter and found nothing. You know, and so the mindset part you were referencing, you know, has to be a part of it too. It's just somehow, I don't know how you do it, but somehow get that mindset out there that, hey, throw your litter in the garbage can and not on the side of the road. Thank you.
Thanks again. Appreciate it. Mr. Sarbanes?
You have to use, you have to. Mr. Sarbanes, if you can just use the mic at the podium, yeah.
You know, it is a problem and I really appreciate what you're doing. Is there still a fine in the state of Maryland? If you know who the person is, if you pick up an envelope and my name's on it, can they come and get me and, and find me for that?
I have to say it.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'd like to do it anyway.
Littering laws, but littering, I think is what our discussion is.
Yeah.
Who, who dumped the trash in the wrong place? Who's responsible for it?
Right. So I don't know. You, it is an issue. And I'm sure when you're picking up trash that you see somebody's name on it. Can you then pursue that legally or is that a dead issue in the state of Maryland?
I have to think it out.
All right. Well, I figure we got two attorneys here. Don't want to put you on. But anyhow, you know, sometimes if the word gets out, you know, where I live, I see people riding down, down the street, literally just dumping the trash out after they've gone to a fast food place. It's just there, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lee.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to say this to make the public aware. And I know they've seen this gentleman with the, the grocery cart. He goes up and down the street and sweeps the trash, the curbs and everything. And he's a homeless gentleman. And he has been all the way up Walmart North. I think he's done Walmart South. I haven't got a chance to find out who he is, but I think he needs recognition. And also, um, there's another gentleman, especially in the summertime, that on Jersey Road, he goes all the way up to the county park and makes sure that the grass is not in the sidewalk, uh, everything is cleaned, you know, that where you wouldn't have to worry about the street sweeping. He has everything cleared up. So those type of people, um, one gentleman's not homeless, but he just, you know, he just does it. John just does it. But this man, this homeless guy, he has his broom, their little dustpan and the garbage can. And he just seemed, he seemed like he enjoys it. And I wished I knew who he was. I, I think the next time I see him, I might get his name. And I think he needs some kind of recognition through, I don't know if Donna, Donna who works with the homeless people know who he is. But we need to find out something. I know the businesses probably give him a sandwich or something, but he don't, he, he, he enjoys it. He just does it, you know. He doesn't beg. He doesn't have no sign up. He's just working. So I think that's a plus to, to our community, city and the county.
Maybe you need to hire him.
Yeah. Thank you, Lee. Next item we have is.
Yeah, the recycling. So, um, I, I think, I think we just have a difference of opinion that we have an issue with recycling. So we still have 15 recycling stations here in the county. So we have more stations than Dorchester, Worcester, Sussex and Somerset combined. And anytime people have called, we have always directed them to the nearest one to their house. And there are still some people that, you know, want to see the civic center returned. We are, we are not bringing it back to the civic center. It is a thousand percent not happening. It's an inappropriate location. It's where tourism happens, events happen. We don't want to see the dumping over there. Not to say that if we didn't want to expand from 15, but it's very difficult for roads and for our solid waste to hit what we have now. 15 is very difficult. I know we had talked about Manning recycling. We had talked about having 24-hour Manning. We talked about budget cuts. We did some math and I just wanted to share that with you. For one recycling station, we would have to cover it 365 days with the 12 holidays at double time. So going all the way through, that's 9,048 hours at $15 an hour. It'd be $135,720. You have FICA and benefits with that. We're talking $197,239. So about $200,000. There'd have to be capital that's put into those places because you would need a structure of some sort, electric, heat, AC. So we're at, you know, roughly, you know, conservative number 50,000 in capital. So 250,000 plus the 10,000 for reoccurring bills for the electric bill for our porta potty, or if we were going to put water and sewer out there, it would be even more. So basically, long story short, one location, we would need 21 shifts at eight hours, at least five people to cover. We're talking $300,000 for one location. We have five in the county. So we're over at a, you know, over a million dollars. And like Lee said, we could put this out there and that's at $15 an hour. That's at minimum wage. So I don't know if, he's having a hard time filling that type of position. I don't know if we would be able to fill that position or not. But it would cost us to get everything in place that first year, about 300,000 for one location. Just so you all have that number. We are looking at a tech solution. So weirdly enough, Andrew Roud from St. John's Property, his wife is actually in a, she has a tech business where they actually monitor different locations. They monitor construction sites. And so if people, you know, they're literally watching the screens and if people trespass or do whatever, they're able to kind of interfere, I guess, in a way through almost like a Ring camera type thing with that talking access. So we are looking at potentially that. It's a lot more cost effective to have that. And their company would monitor it. So we are looking at a solution for possibly tech. So we'll keep you updated on that.
I think the, the biggest concern is that the, I can't really speak for Nantico Grove, but I, I think the one at the civic center is probably the most utilized center that you had. And it certainly was the most convenient for the citizens of the county. And that's, that's probably would have been the last one that I would have wanted to see removed, personally.
Right.
And from what, from what I've heard from the public as well. So I, I get it. Putting someone there 24 hours, that's, that's not really going to be workable. But if you think you have another solution through this, this company, that would be great to pursue that. Some location near this, this civic center. I mean, the county has a lot of land.
Yep. Well, look, like I said, we don't have the people to cover all 15 locations. So if we were to close another location and maybe reopen that one, then that's fine. But they're spending hours and hours and hours cleaning those every single day. So just so you know. Somebody asked about a grant writer for emergency services. So right now in the budget, we have a grant administrator position to oversee all grants throughout the county and search for additional funding. So emergency services would be included in that. I don't know how you all will feel around budget time adding that position, but it is one that we will have with you, you know, and you'll have to make that decision if you want to keep it or not. So that is coming.
That's the one position that'll pay for itself.
It definitely will. Yeah. Yeah. So we have that coming. We talked about the inmates coming back. And then any information on the intersection on railroad road, old railroad road and Route 50? I haven't heard any updates. I know that Mark Crampton took a lot of talking points from James's Town Hall. So I haven't heard any updates from him on that. He, so my suggestion would be if we want any updates, it's a state road. So we can reach out to MDOT. But no, no new updates. I don't know if they're going to do traffic studies on that or, you know, continue what they're doing on that. But I have not heard any updates.
I was told that there was a, a camera put up at that intersection for a couple of days.
Last Tuesday, they put a camera up and Friday they took it down.
Yeah. So I don't know.
Because they're seeing how many crossovers are happening and that kind of stuff.
They're looking at possibly, they're looking at possibly putting a J-turn there, which is just not a solution at all.
I was emailed that they, and I sent it to Jeff, that they had halted it until they did the study. So we're going to hopefully get some more information about that soon.
Cool.
I talked to Mrs. Roy and they had a meeting with the state because that would, that's on their intersection, the intersection that it would affect them the most. And pretty much they're going to do more studying. It's, study's outdated that they did. So that's kind of where it's at.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you all for the update. So, but that's it. That was our topic.
I've got a question.
Go ahead, Jim.
Mr. Giordano, I'm sure this won't endure me to many people, many of our employees, but this past year you gave two extra days off that were, was not, you know, in our approved holiday schedule, which you have the right to do. What's the cost of an eight-hour day for employees in Wycomico County? In other words, what did that cost us?
I, Pam's not here. I, I don't know off the top of my head.
You don't?
I can get it to you though.
Well, no, I was kind of wondering if you give those days off, you would know what it was costing the taxpayers.
Well, do you know?
No, I don't. That's why I'm asking you.
Well, you give off Christmas and all those. So how much does that cost?
This is in addition to that. I think it's a million dollars.
In addition, I'm talking about the two extra days you get off.
Right. I, I have no idea. Had, had you had asked that topic, I would have had everything lined. Yeah, that's why I asked for those topics.
Well, I kind of figured, you know, being you approve those, you would know what it costs for.
Well.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Yeah.
The other I have is a community foundation, well, I have it here. Community Foundation, you know, we had a scholarship program with them and the money's kind of like almost gone. I don't, I would think that we maybe would have just transferred that to some type of workforce development scholarship.
I'm fine with that. Yeah, I know they have asked us what we were going to do with that money.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for giving us this update, Julie.
Yeah, appreciate it. Appreciate it very much.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. Got to get that last dig in, don't you?
Do what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Mr. Giordano.
I said, I feel, I, I, I just, I would have had that information for you, so I do apologize for not having it, so.
That's not what you said.
I said, I feel like it's like a dig at the very end.
No, I was just asking a question.
Well, it kind of is, because I would have had that information.
I would have thought if you gave those days off, you would know what it costs the taxpayers of Wycomico County.
I know, we have so many numbers that it's just, you know, it's just not something I have off the top of my head.
And thank you all for, uh, approving our new deputy public works director. Because I've, I've been doing a lot of public works over the last, uh, several months and, uh, I look forward to Mr. Swaby taking the load off of me.
But Bunkie, I want to say thank you to you because you have carried the ship, and it has been a very stressful time. We've had a lot of things going on, you know, with the landfill and everything else, so I do appreciate everything that you've done.
Well, it's, 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 you know, this job, you're, you're in this job and part of it's to learn, so I've learned a whole lot, and so...
You're a public works expert now.
No, I wasn't. Thank you.
Just don't go applying for a public...
They haven't asked for wash dishes yet. Feel great.
Oh, it's coming. Steve, I asked you.
Next item on the agenda is the, uh, proposed license agreement with the West Side Community Center, Mr. Steve Miller. Steve, how are you doing?
Well, good morning.
Good to see you.
Members of the council. Um, so I'm here to talk about a proposed license agreement, um, with the West Side Neighborhood Alliance that would lease the West Side Community Center for a period of five years. Um, in recent years, we've struggled, um, to get consistent, uh, programming, well-attended programming at the community center. Um, I'm sure there's a number of reasons as to why that is the case, but the fact is, we've, uh, struggled to get people to attend programs. Um, and the bottom line is, what we've ended up with is a facility that is often not utilized to its fullest extent. So, um, uh, we feel it's an underu- underutilized asset, and one of the things we thought would help in trying to turn that around, um, would be having local West Side people that would, would help take the lead on programs, activities and events that they would want to see take place at the center. So we've been working with various folks, um, people that live in the neighborhoods, people that are plugged in, have their, their finger on the pulse, and we've been able to connect with a very, uh, dedicated group of volunteers, um, that have formed this organization called the West Side Neighborhood Alliance, uh, many of which are, are sitting behind me. Um, over the last nine months, we've been discussing and talking about different things that we could do, ways we could increase activity, and, uh, what we've come up with is the license agreement, uh, that is sitting before you today. Um, I'm happy to talk about any parts of it. A very simplistic, um, overview of it is it's very similar to the agreements we have with local little leagues, where the county owns those little league facilities. We lease them to the little leagues who take the responsibility, uh, to do the bulk of the programming and, and day-to-day type maintenance. So essentially, that's what this is based off of. Uh, the Neighborhood Alliance would take the lead in forming the schedule, uh, conducting activities, events, special events. Uh, they would take the responsibility of day-to-day housekeeping, uh, keeping the facility clean, picking up trash, things of that nature. And then they would also reimburse, uh, the county for a portion of the utility costs. Uh, right now, the county bears 100% of those costs, so, um, in this arrangement, the county would actually save money, um, and they would also be providing a service, uh, to increase activity at the center. Um, on the flip side, the county, we would assist with some minor maintenance at the facility, uh, take responsibility for the outdoors. Um, we would also have the main responsibility, if it were to come to capital improvements, if you had to replace the roof or do some major capital stuff, that would be obviously pending available funds, but that would fall to the county. And then we would also have the ability to run our own program, so this does not preclude the county from running an event or a program, or like we do the community dinner out there. Um, we would still have the ability to do that. We would coordinate with the alliance to, um, uh, work out those details, work out dates, uh, et cetera. So, um, again, we feel the arrangement could be very beneficial, both to the county, also to the residents on the West Side. Uh, we hope it'd be mutually beneficial. Uh, as I mentioned, we have members of the alliance who are here, who, who I'm sure would be happy to be answer, to answer questions about their organization. I also have a handout that gives, um, a brief summary of their mission and vision as far as their organization, and I'd, uh, again, be happy to answer any questions from the county side, so I'll pass this out.
Steve, thank you for coming in and, uh, talking about this. I, I think not too long ago, there was a incident of vandalism out there. Um, is that maybe because that building's not used enough and...
Um, I think it...
It might help.
Yeah, certainly that would help. We've installed cameras and I think that's helped, and we're able to, to catch the folks that were involved there, but, um, certainly good activity, I think in general, whether it's in parks or a building like that, good activity, uh, often chases away bad activity.
Thank you. You know, I think this is really, uh, a, a great initiative. Um, talk about creative commercial, uh, community planning, I've never experienced anything like this, it's really good. How did you come up with the reimbursement plan, Steve, as far as day one, 33, 40, 50 and all that? How'd you come up with that?
So that, that was a negotiation with, um, the folks that were part of the alliance. I think one, one of their concerns is as a nonprofit, there's not a ton of revenue on that side, so they're going to have to find sponsors or generate revenue. So I think what we tried to do is, is do something that was reasonable for them, that they thought they could achieve, that would gradually increase over time. Uh, presumably, over time, as activities increase, the utility costs will increase. So we tried to work together to, to make, uh, something make sense for both sides, and that's, that's what we came up with.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because it's, it's a, it's a, a large undertaking. I would just hope that it'd be something where they could sustain it.
Right.
I'm not quite sure what those expenses might be, but regardless.
Sure. Yeah, and I don't know if it would be beneficial. Candace Reddy is the chair of, of the organization. She is here today.
Sure.
I don't know if you'd want to, uh, hear directly from her, but... Sorry to put you on the spot, Candace.
Steve, I, I see the, the licensee would hold the insurance policy?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay.
We are currently in the, um, exploring, uh, working with insurers to get a good policy, and if you all approve this, uh, this agreement in your next meeting, we will at that point activate, well, I learned new terms, we will bind the insurance, and we will have sufficient coverage to meet your needs. And if I may, I'd like to say thank you to the council for entertaining this, and thank you to Steve. He has been incredible. He's been a wonderful example of collegiality and wisdom and responsiveness. I mean, just awesome. And, and we are very excited. If I may, I'd like to ask the folks who accompanied me, excuse me, four of the additional 10 members of our board to stand and recognize, if you all would stand.
Alright.
Thank you. So we represent the far west side of the Wycomico County, and so if you ever go down, I've just learned it's down the end of the road, is what I was calling it. We are down there and come visit us. So Steve, thank you, and any questions, I'd be happy to...
I have a couple, I have a couple, um, a question. What is the condition of the building? I'm familiar with the building. What is the condition of the building?
Um, it's an old building.
Yeah, I get it.
So we...
That's why I'm asking the question.
It, um, it's functional. We, we have a roof leak that we're dealing with there, like we do in many places. Um, and we've had issues with heating and different things that we're trying to address. So it, it is, I think, built in 1950s, so it's a very old building, but right now it's functional and, um, it's usable.
And you do, uh, lead, lead testing, asbestos and all that stuff?
Yeah.
You don't, the reason why I'm asking, you don't want to give a, a person a building that's not safe. That's why I'm asking these questions.
Sure.
Because I'm quite familiar with it. I've been to functions years ago, um, at that, uh, community center. I'm familiar with the area, Byavale, Nanticoke and all that, Coronado. And the second thing, a suggestion I would like to give the new, um, alliance is that contact, um, churches, so you can rent it out to them, because a lot of churches are small, and like if they have homecomings or want to have a function that their church, uh, hall is not big enough, I would contact churches and, um, uh, other organizations like that, that advertise, and once you get your advertisement, I would send them a letter letting them know the facility is available for rent.
Thank you.
And, and because a lot of people, um, churches don't have space, and I know, like, a wedding, even weddings, you know, uh, things like that, you know?
Thank you. That's part of our plan, and, but thank you for identifying the churches. I've written that down. Thank you.
If you need any help, you know, let me know, because I know most people down there.
We'll be in touch.
I know most people down there.
Thank you.
Those churches, at least the churches.
This would be coming back as a resolution?
It actually requires a public hearing, so it'll be coming back as a public hearing and approval, um, by resolution, and we can do that the second meeting in February, which is February the 20th at 10:00 a.m.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. President, could I, I'm nitpicking, but can you, in this license agreement, can you add the name, can you put ink on the name, West Side Neighborhood Alliance? Because that's not the correct name that's in here. It's a minor thing, but...
Yes. Yes.
That's an attorney thing, right? I'm being nerdy, but, yeah, I'd appreciate it if you'd do that.
Small things that save you in the long run. Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, thank, thank you for doing this. This, this building needs to be used.
Agreed.
We are passionate about it.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Group down there, yeah.
Are you, are you, uh, familiar, I think there's a West, there's a West Side Task Force. Are you familiar with any of the people involved in that?
We have met, I haven't personally met them, but some of the folks sitting in the back of the room have, and we are, um, we're learning about them, and so...
Yeah. Might be, I'm just throwing it out, it might be a good idea to work together.
It's on the agenda for our next board meeting. Are we going to have an official representative or keep it as an informal, um, connection? But thank you for pointing it out.
Absolutely.
Great. Thanks again. Thank you very much. Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is forest conservation easement relocation. Mr. Harrison? How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. You state, just stating to the public, thank you.
Sure. I'm Marilyn Williams with Wycomico Planning and Zoning, and I was just going to start the conversation by introducing you to Colin Harrison. He is our new environmental planner. He comes to us from Pennsylvania. He's relocated here. He is a graduate with, um, environmental studies and geography from the University of Pittsburgh in Johnstown, and, um, he will be working with the Forest Conservation and Critical Areas Regulations.
Thanks, Marilyn. Colin Harrison, environmental planner, Wycomico County. Macron Engineering has applied for the relocation of forest conservation on behalf of Purdue Farms Incorporated. Uh, this request is to allow for the relocation of 5.4 acres on-site. Uh, this reconfiguration, uh, will allow for the progression of the Purdue Railway Expansion.
Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Josh?
Just a quick question. Is, is this, I know there were some changes to forest conservation law last year. I didn't jump in to see what that looks like, um, just to making sure that you all, we're all still in compliance with the one-to-one ratio or, 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 I don't know what the current ratio is, if that's still act...
That is correct. Being this is on a contiguous acreage, uh, this would be at a one-to-one ratio.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
I guess, I guess I'm happy to see that Purdue is expanding something. Um, I find it interesting, they're expanding a railroad site. Because railroads seem to be something that's diminishing over time, but...
Coming back?
It's cool that they're doing that. And, you know, it's part of our farming, um, community. It's important to the, to our economy, so I'm good with it.
Again, Mr. Lee, will this be a public hearing, I'm assuming?
It does require a public hearing, um, three weeks' worth of advertising, so we're looking at February the 20th at 10:00 a.m.
Great. Alright.
Thanks, council.
Good meeting you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is a new, new air service incentive program. Mr. Tony Rudy, the airport. A lot of people very interested in this, Mr. Rudy.
Good morning, Tony Rudy Airport Director. So the air service program that, um, that I sent to you, um, this was discussed with the, um, Airport Commission during a couple meetings we had. These programs are, are fairly common, uh, among airports of all sizes around the country, and, um, what their purpose is, is really to help, help attract new air service or new routes, um, to an airport. The program that, that I put together here, I looked at several programs around the country, um, probably about a dozen, and, um, uh, many of them are very similar, so we, we kind of picked out the elements we felt fit best with our airport and, uh, gave us the best chance to, uh, to attract new air service to the airport. The program, it is open to all air carriers, including, uh, Piedmont Airlines, which is currently at the airport. So if Piedmont wanted to add a new route, um, we would, we would offer the, the same, uh, financial benefits to them. Um, so the program really offers incentives to help limit startup costs, um, to a carrier that might be coming in, um, or an existing carrier, um, for a period of two years. Um, this is, um, it is approved by the FAA. They do recognize these programs, um, and, and they realize the, the importance of these to try to attract new air service. Um, and basically, these costs, um, you know, they help allow the carrier to, to set up, you know, obviously, it's a big upfront expense to, um, bring in equipment, bring in employees, and basically wait for that service to, to really, you know, take off, excuse the pun. Um, but, you know, it, it, it takes time for these routes to build, for passengers to build, for passengers to, for the public to get word, and for passengers to actually travel. So, the fees, basically, there's, there's two fees that we'd be waiving. One is for landing fees, and the other is for space that is rented. It's important to notice that we're currently not collecting those for, for any new carrier that could potentially come in. So, it's really kind of a net zero cost upfront. But there are advertising and marketing fees that we would use from our existing budget for general advertising purposes that we would focus directly on, on the new routes or, or the new carrier that comes in. We also have a provision in there. So, there's, there's actually two 12-month periods that, that we look at. And we have a provision in the agreement that if the carrier ceases the service within one of those two 12-month periods, the airport can ask the carrier for the advertising costs back. So, we could, we could recoup those costs that we've, we've extended if the service doesn't work. Any questions?
You know, it's, it looks like a great marketing tool. How does Piedmont, and I don't know whether you've had any conversations with anybody there, feel about, you know, I know they might be different routes they run, but if somebody else came in, how does Piedmont feel about us paying for or giving breaks to new competition for them?
I've had that conversation with them. They were, they were agreeable to this program, but they were, they did push back a little bit to the, to the effect that, you know, they are paying all, all of the costs now. And I don't look at this as a subsidy to a new carrier, because if we didn't get a new carrier, and Piedmont would be paying the exact same costs. In the end, Piedmont will end up paying less as far as landing fees because we'll have another carrier that eventually, when they're successful, they will help offset those landing costs that we're collecting today. And, you know, truthfully, other airports I've worked at, you bring in a new carrier, it doesn't necessarily impact the service of the existing carriers in a negative way. In fact, it tends to kind of boost your, your bottom line and boost travel altogether. So, everyone is...
Sort of like one restaurant being across the street from the other.
Exactly.
No pun intended on this question, but is there anybody waiting in the wings for this program to come so you can approach them and hopefully get them in?
That, that's a great question. And there was one thing I failed to, to mention. We've been working with an air service consultant, and we've been talking to a couple of different carriers. And they've made it pretty clear that they really wouldn't be interested in coming to the airport unless we had this type of incentive program. So, we have two that are a possibility. Probably one, well, I shouldn't say one more than another. There, there are two different circumstances. One is waiting to get the, the equipment and the staff to be able to do this. The other one is actively, actively looking out new routes. They've changed their business model slightly. So, we're hoping to hear something from them fairly soon.
And we went through this a few years ago with, I think it was Allegiance. And we, the airport spent quite a bit of money, you know, getting them here. And I think we bought a loading dock or loading steps or whatever. Are they still there, by the way?
Allegiance?
No, no. The loading steps that we spent, I think, I don't know, $100,000.
Yeah. Yes, we do have that. We do have that ramp.
Yeah, ramp. Yeah, that's what they call it. And of course, that was short-lived. You know, they, they came and went really, really quick. So, it would, so I think you need to look really careful and find out if whoever's going to step in the door that they're going to obligate yourself.
That's one thing. We, we have data to back up services that we're, we're looking at. And we're actively going to air service conferences to talk to the airlines, to keep them engaged, and to show them the data that we, that we basically collected with our air service consultant as to markets that are, that are feasible. We do, it's, it's important to note is we're, we lose about 85% of our passenger traffic in what we call our catchment area, which is the immediate area we could normally expect to draw passengers from. We lose about 85% of our traffic to other airports, mainly BWI, and mainly because of Southwest. But we're hoping to, you know, capture back some of those passengers. You know, other airports I've worked at, if we, if we had 85% of the passengers, we were, we were upset. We would lose 15% to an airport that's an hour away. Well, we've got, we've got much more than that we're losing here. And people are driving over two hours. So, I think we can capture back some of that.
So, we have 85% to grow, is what you're saying?
Yes. I don't think we'll ever capture that whole bit back. But if we could double what we're, what we have right now in passenger traffic, I think we'd be doing, doing really well.
So, you think because you had a new carrier come in, you think because you had a new carrier come in, the cost of traveling would go down? Is that what you're thinking?
It depends on the carrier. It depends on what their route are. It depends whether it's a low-cost carrier, but that is a possibility.
You said Piedmont had some pushback on this. You don't think that in the future, after you secure another carrier, that this would jeopardize our relationship with Piedmont?
I, I don't believe so, no. No, I, I think it'll help, help grow. Piedmont's struggling right now with, with the pilot shortage, with the mechanic shortage, with the new mechanic school that we're getting in there. We're hoping they will, they will be able to hire more mechanics, bring back more of that business to this community, and, and kind of strengthen their, their position here.
I think we've made a lot of investments in the airport. And I think we've done a lot of whatever we can to benefit Piedmont. You know, people really do appreciate the fact that you have the route to Charlotte, or you have the route to Philadelphia. But yes, people do ask constantly, when is there going to be an alternate route somewhere? And I think this is really, Tony, I think it's really great that you, you're, you took the initiative to make this happen. It's going to be, I think it's going to be a catalyst for, for future business at the airport and county, and it'll benefit Piedmont as well in the long run.
Yes, definitely. I believe so, too.
Do you see this funding? Is this something that you see is going to be coming out of the airport budget? Or is it something that you will have to allocate additional funding for this fiscal year '25?
So, we would, we would continue with, we do have an advertising line item in the budget. And we would continue basically at the same level we're at currently.
Questions? So, I guess where would we be, where, what do, what do we, what do you need from us now, between you and Mr. Hurley? Where, where does this go?
I guess we'll have a, a resolution to actually formalize the adoption of this. So, we could, could go to carriers in the future and say, we have this program in place. And here's what we can offer them.
Okay. Everybody good?
Good.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Very good. Next item we have is a lot of support for Minds in Motion for legislative bond funding. We, we did this, I believe, last year?
Yes. Thank you for having me back.
Certainly. Good to have you back.
My name is Melanie Kerber, and I'm on the board of Minds in Motion Children's Museum in Salisbury. We started in 2017 to put together a children's museum. And there are about 500 children's museums worldwide in 19 countries and across the United States. North started a feasibility study to determine whether or not this would be a reasonable enterprise to bring here and found that the nearest children's museum was about 100 miles away, which makes it very difficult for parents with young families to do that. And they proposed an 8,500 square foot space that would be renovated to be a touch-everything museum. This is not a traditional place space. This is a place where children come and work with other kids. There's all kinds of interactive exhibits. They learn about careers. They learn about science. They learn about discovery. Minds in Motion has been in the community since 2017 at Third Fridays, at Peace in the Park, at the Folk Festival. Last year, we did a number of activities at the Crown Sports Center. And this past summer, we sponsored our first summer camp where 25 students from middle schools just talked, they spent the week talking with NASA engineers about what's called the Grace Project. And it's the changes in gravity across the world and how that affects our water supply. And that was a very timely topic, given our location to water. What we are asking now is for your support in helping us retain a, obtain a bond bill from Annapolis. We need a building. And we have been in touch with a number of agencies to secure a space. Not having a building keeps us from getting grants because granting agencies want to see some indication that you're there to stay, that you have sustainability, that you'll be there for at least 15 years. And we feel that if we could get a bond bill from the state, that would give, and, and raise the additional money that is called upon to renovate a space, that would give us some standing. And also, it would help us retain grants and also fundraising from our other donors. One thing I want to make clear is that the data on children's museums is very, very clear. It starts at a very young age to develop curiosity, imagination, creativity. And that develops critical pathways in critical thinking and higher-order thinking skills. If you've ever been to a children's museum, you will see that it's a very, very interactive place where parents and kids really come together. So, there's that. It also enhances learning. And I don't need to, I'm a retired school principal and superintendent. I don't need to bore you with the facts of what's going on in education today, particularly in underserved communities, and especially in a post-COVID era. Finally, it is an economic incentive. It's a, it's an investment in the community. This not only creates tourism through visitors. And we feel like we would get a substantial number of visitors from our own community, from visiting school districts, but also from the Ocean City, the beach community on a rainy day during the summertime, when what do you do with the kids? But also, it creates jobs. And that would go right back into our community. We are an all-volunteer group. We are determined to bring this into our community. And we are working now with Bill Chambers of the Chamber of Commerce. He has strongly helped me along this path. And we are committed to investing in our children because that is the future. And that prepares them for a lifetime of opportunities coming down the road.
Josh?
Thank you, Dr. Kerber. Did you receive a bond bill last year?
We did not. And for a number of reasons. One was, was that we, you know, the, the bust that we had had was not a good investment. So, that had all kinds of mechanical problems. So, we did not. However, with this, I feel like we have, are carefully navigating this to a point where we've built a very strong rationale with supporting documents that will at least get an eye.
Okay. And then last two questions. Do you have a, a match in funding? And do you have a sponsor?
We have, for us, for our sponsors, for the fundraising, we've engaged nonprofit partners, which have been fundraisers across the country, especially the, the Northeast, to coach us through a capital campaign. Given the initial estimate, it was initially, the original feasibility study called for a $2.5 million price tag in renovating $8,500. With the increase in costs, I think we would probably have to pivot down to about a 5,000 square foot space. But we do have a fundraising strategy. But we've, we've got to have this bond bill first before we can get that going.
Just for clarity, are, are, do you have match money secured for this that you're...
Not yet. No.
Okay. And then last, the legislative, do you have a legislative?
Yes, yes.
That is...
Delegate Adams and Senator Mazur, Johnny Motts. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
The council, you have a draft of the letter of support. Everybody okay with this?
Yes, I think it's a wonderful idea.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Thank you very much for your time.
And Mr. Hurley will get it out to you, right? It will get you a copy of what we're sending out.
That would be great. Because I need to send everything in together. That would be great. And thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I have, I have a gentleman. I know that your mission is different, but do you work with the Junior Achievement Board, any?
We, we have worked with the Junior Achievement. We, we have approached them. And I, I know Jamie pretty well. Again, I'm a, I'm a retired school superintendent, and I'm familiar with how, I don't want to use the word turfish, but people protect...
I understand. That's fine. You don't have to anymore.
Yeah. Okay. There you go. All right. We speak in shorthand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we're going to recess for half hour lunch. We're on schedule.
I'm not going to congratulate you. First time you've been on schedule in ages.
Following the lunch, when we get back here at 12:30, we'll begin with Liquor Dispensary Task Force meeting, followed by the capital improvement plan discussion, general discussion, discussion with the Board of Education, and capital project funding requests for fiscal year '24 for the Westside Regional Waste Water System. All right.
Thank you.
I'll go to you too, Jen.
Same with you.